Meeting that will be held beginning April 27th in the high school gym. Tonight, we're going to hear about the articles that are on the select board's agenda. Tomorrow night, we will hear the articles that are on the planning board agenda. On March 9th, we'll hear the primary budget warrant articles at a finance committee public hearing. And then on March 16th, we will hear the enterprise fund budget again with the finance committee. So let me remind you, this is a public hearing, and the purpose of the public hearing is for us to hear and begin to understand in more depth those warrant articles that will come before our legislative session at town meeting. So tonight, after the presentations are made, questions are perfectly good. Ask questions of content, of substance, of also clarity of presentation. Ask anything you want. What we are not here to do tonight, though, is to debate the particular articles that are here in front of us. That, of course, is what we do at town meeting. So we have, I think, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 articles tonight. And Keith, you are number one on the hit parade. So we're going to hear now from Keith Bergman, who's going to talk to us about municipal housing trust by law.
My name's Keith Bergman. I'm chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee, and our committee has been charged by the select board in preparing a proposed bylaw to adopt a municipal affordable housing trust. And just by way of context, you may recall that a year ago, the town meeting in 2019 voted to accept the authorizing state statute, Chapter 44, Section 55(c), which authorizes an affordable housing trust, the purpose of which is to promote the preservation and creation of low and moderate income housing and community housing. This article, this year, Article 13, implements that prior vote by proposing to adopt a Town of Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust bylaw. In that bylaw, it would empower the Board of Trustees, who are appointed by the select board, that those trustees would have the ability to receive and disperse funds and real property that's dedicated to affordable housing, and that their activities would be subject to guidelines that are approved by the select board, and those guidelines would be consistent with the town's adopted housing goals. It's well to recall that a year ago, our predecessor group, the Affordable Housing Funding Committee, told the voters that Concord needs predictable, sustainable revenue sources so that funds are readily available when affordable housing opportunities arrive. And without the necessary funds to act quickly, valuable opportunities could be missed. So you recall that a year ago, that committee brought a package of four articles, all of which were approved by town meeting. One was to appropriate $500,000 for affordable housing. Another accepted the statute, as I've mentioned, for Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And two of the articles filed authorized filing of home rule petitions to establish a building permit surcharge and a real estate transfer fee for Concord to be deposited in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Since then, the select board appointed a five-member Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee, and that committee was comprised of myself, Lee Smith, Holly Darzen, Linda Miller, and Jim Terry. And we were also assisted by our select board liaison, Linda Escobedo. Over 100 cities and towns have accepted that statute, and the statute provides the language that we have based the bylaw on. The select board has voted to recommend this proposed bylaw, and it would require approval of town meeting and then the attorney general, who has 90 days to act after that. In the bylaw itself, the select board would appoint five to seven trustees, which would include one select board member, who would be a voting member of the Board of Trustees. The select board, as I mentioned, would approve the trust policy goals and guidelines, consistent with the town's adopted housing goal. So it would be a board, the trustees would be an integral part of the town's program for housing. The select board approval would be needed for the trust to borrow money, or to mortgage, or pledge trust assets, or to purchase, or convey interest in property, or to amend the trust document. And the town treasurer would be the custodian of the trust funds. Potential funding sources for a municipal affordable housing trust include the two home rule petitions that I mentioned, if those are enacted, one for building permit surcharge, another for real estate transfer fee. Also, town meeting appropriations could be deposited in the fund in this year's town meeting warrant. The article which follows this one in the warrant, Article 14, proposes to appropriate $500,000 for affordable housing, and provides, in that article, that those funds could be deposited or transferred by the town manager with select board approval to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Community preservation funds are often a principal source of funding in communities that have affordable housing trusts, and that we would expect that the trustees would engage with the community preservation committee about that. Developer fees can also be put in an Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a community with an inclusionary zoning bylaw. Sometimes, a payment in lieu of provision of an affordable unit is made, so those funds could be put in an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And also, private donations can be deposited. And potential recipients of the trust funds could be the town of Concord itself, Concord Housing Development Corporation, the Concord Housing Authority, or any other local development entity. In that way, we think the trust will complement the existing efforts and entities and programs in Concord. And the trust could also act quickly when affordable housing opportunities arise, because they would need not have to wait for an annual town meeting to have the authority to spend its funds. It would have the authority to spend the funds, and even to acquire property if the selectmen voted to approve. So that is the proposal for a general bylaw for Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you, Keith. Are there any questions from the select board? We haven't had a chance to discuss this a little bit. Do you have any questions from the public? Are there any questions from the public? And if there are, not just for this one, but for other articles, there's a mic in the back, Henry. So if you could, can you?
58 Everett Street. I just have one suggestion, and that is with regard to Section 11, where it describes the limits on the borrowing power of the trust, where it says that a mortgage shall not have, they shall not pledge assets or collateral greater than the extent of the trust's assets, that that might create some ambiguity. And I suggest that you change that to the value of the real estate owned by the trust.
Are you following that, Keith? So this is in Section 11?
This is, Section 11, yes.
It looks like that's in Item 11 of Section 6.
Well, it's on 16. It starts to borrow money or such, on such terms.
Section 6, Number 11.
I can share that the language, as it appears in Item 11, we lifted directly from the statute. So to the extent that, and we were seeking to have whatever it is that that statute means, to all the affordable housing trusts in the Commonwealth, that it would also mean to Concord. But I appreciate the comment. We can certainly look into that if it's causing confusion.
If you have that option, I think, since the assets might be open to some question as to what those assets consist of, and I assume what you're really talking about is being able to mortgage property that the trust owns, that it would lend some clarity to it if it could be limited to the real estate owned by the trust. Just, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for staying.
Thanks for the comment.
Ms. Lawer?
Ruth Lawer, Kaiser Road. I have a few questions. I hope you'll bear with me. I understand that the language is boilerplate, but the term in particular does not match how we have terms for our committees in the rest of our town, except for Planning Board and public ceremonies. Everybody's three years, and if we could make it match so that it feels more like one of our committees instead of a state committee, I would be thrilled.
I'd be pleased to answer that. And regrettably, the statute itself, under which we're operating, defines the term as a two-year term. Our approach to that was to, and frankly, the concern is, the attorney general cannot approve a local bylaw that conflicts with state law. So I think we're stuck with two-year terms, but there's, we recognize that if someone's there for three, two-year terms, that that would be as long as two, three-year terms.
It evens out, yes. Also, on the language of the trust, I'm assuming, then, that we can't build in associate members to bring people, you know, to learn their job and bring them up to speed. Section 6, we're talking on Number 5 and 6, we talk about employing advisors and agents and paying them reasonable compensation. Is that going to be within the purview of the Board of Trustees or the Board of Select, I'm sorry, the Select Board? In particular, up to now, the hiring attorneys has been the task of the town manager. And the reasonable compensation for advisors and agents, is this somewhat like we do trustees of town donations? Thank you. And I'm getting to the end. Section 7, all expenditures will be processed through the town's payment warrant. So the money lives here, and the town treasurer is doing the assignment, distribution.
Yes, that's correct. The Board of Trustees would be a municipal board, they'd be a town board, and the funds that they are in charge of would be town funds that are administered in the way any other monies are with any other municipal board.
Thank you. I'm getting to the end. Number 10, duration of the trust. This can be terminated by a majority vote of town meeting. Does that mean a majority vote of town meeting can institute the trust as well? We don't say here if it requires a two-thirds majority or a simple majority.
It was a simple majority vote of town meeting that accepted the statute. It would be a simple majority vote to adopt the general bylaw as well, but the provision would, as you point out, in the duration of the trust, majority vote, it would also be a simple majority vote to get out of the trust business.
Finally, does this build in any aspect of Concord preference?
There's, to the extent that we are following all of the guidelines and programs that are currently in place, that we're going to be in the funding business, so if it's a Concord, if it's a Concord project, and subject to all of the approvals that that goes through, that it would have whatever preferences live in those other programs. There would be no reason to exclude it, but there's not a specific, it's, we are, the trustees would be a funding source for other programs, and if they're creating affordable housing that also gets counted, is, the goal is to count it on the subsidized housing inventory, then that will be subject to a so-called LIP agreement, which the state approves, and so all of those requirements that are in place, be able to have affordable units be counted, and the degree to which you can have a local preference or not would be, none of that would be because it's coming from the trust, it would be from where all the other housing programs live.
Be embedded in the projects, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I'm the chair of the Finance Committee, but I'm just speaking for myself. Mr. Dane brought up an interesting idea, which is that the trust might hold assets in real property. I don't think that's the intention of this. I think this is a financial function. So if you could clarify that, just so that we're not left with that understanding, or if it's possible for the trust to hold real estate, please let us know how that would work.
It is possible, under the statute, for the trust to hold property. That's why, but what we have established in the bylaw is that it would require, in the third bullet here, it would require select board approval for the trust to purchase, accept, sell, lease, exchange, transfer, abandon, convey interest in real, personal, or mixed property. We didn't want, we didn't think that the trustees should have that authority on their own, and that it should be with the approval of the select board. What might it look like? I think it's going to be largely a funding mechanism, but if the opportunity comes along during the course of a year to accept a donation of property for affordable housing purposes, right now, to my understanding, that takes a vote of town meeting to do. You can, you know, a town, through its conservation commission authority, can acquire open space property with select board approval without a town meeting vote. There's no similar mechanism in place right now for affordable housing. The Affordable Housing Trust, though, as empowered by the state statute, could do that, and we're saying that if they were to acquire the property, because someone's donating it, and we want it to be held as affordable, that one way to, you know, act quickly and grab it would be to take ownership of it with the select board's approval. We're not envisioning, though, that the Affordable Housing Trust would be a developer, though, and there are all sorts of reasons why we would not want to do that, including that it's a town board, subject to the prevailing wage laws. But that if, if the opportunity existed, and it was with the select board's approval to acquire the, to acquire the property for affordable housing, we didn't want to strike that out of the powers that are granted by the statute. We wanted to leave it in.
All right, thank you. The next article this evening is the, to authorize special legislation senior means tested property tax exemption, Mr. Bukas. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm Reiner Bukas, a member of the Concord Tax Fairness Committee, and speaking for that committee. I move that the Concord Select Board submit a home rule petition allowing the re-establishment of a senior means-tested property tax exemption, as printed in the warrant, with an additional change, changing the income provision of gross income. And you have the handout if you want to fight your way through the fine print, of course, there's a lot. Some background. In 2007, the Select Board established a committee to consider and recommend ways to reduce the property tax burden on older homeowners of limited income. The committee considered many possibilities, and considering that's back eight years ago, before that got there, but found the town's options were severely limited by the limits of the state constitution and the rules on taxing. In 2015, the committee was refocused, renamed the Concord Tax Fairness Committee, and sought a model that would meet both local and state requirements. We found that the town of Sudbury had come up with a model which received both state and town approval. In 2016, Concord Town Meeting requested that the Select Board submit a home rule petition allowing Concord to adopt the Sudbury model. And the state gave, the town meeting approved it, the state gave its approval, the town meeting approved it, and it was ratified by a town-wide referendum in that year. Oh, how did we jump all over this? Here we go. Okay. What does it do? It offers a reduction in town property tax to people who have been our neighbors for 10 or more years, who are older than 65, whose homes are assessed at or below our median value of $882,000, whose income is less than the state circuit breaker amount, which ranges from $58,000 to $88,000 a year, based upon single or marriage status and so forth, and have no other significant assets. The goal is to try to limit their property tax to less than 10% of their income. The committee is pleased to report that the program is working. This year, 44 of our neighbors divided the total exemption of about $144,000. This assistance was paid for by our acceptance of a 2-cent increase in the town property tax rate, from $14.21 to $14.23 per thousand. So why do we town come before you again? We recommend two changes in the program. First, our present act, as approved by the state, included the necessity for resubmission after three years. It's now two years ago. Given that you, as members of the town and in town meeting, have the ability to suspend the program by majority vote at any time, we recommend that the program be made permanent, in other words, not requiring resubmission to the state, and this has been done in Sudbury. Also, to reduce administrative burden, we recommend that the definition of income be changed and made simple, i.e. gross income from a Form 1040, as our assessor has recommended. This will not increase the cost of the program. So here are the changes that we recommended, okay? We point out that these don't change the eligibility, don't increase the allowable rise in the property tax, it's limited to a half of 1%, and actually, it's .17% at the moment, do not remove the town meeting's ability to, authority to repeal the program at any time, and does not result in any new appropriation. How do we actually make it happen? We now ask agreement of the meeting to continue this assistance to help making housing here affordable to our senior neighbors, in homes they have long occupied. Here are the next step. After the town meeting, okay, the select board passes it to the state of approval. After that approval, we need to come back to town meeting again, and then ask for town meeting approval, and then go back to the voters, and in a referendum, ask for the town's approval again. It's complicated, but that's the way it works, and that's what we do for our senior citizens who can use some assistance. So the Tax Fairness Committee requests that we continue this program with these changes, and ask the select board to pass this on to the state for approval. Thank you.
Mr. Bukas, are there questions about this article? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next one, which is the approval of tax increment financing agreement, which I'm going to. So Article 16 is to approve a tax increment financing agreement, and as printed in the warrant, and there's a handout in the back. Next slide, please. So what does Article 16 do? It approves a tax increment financing agreement, which is attached, a draft is attached to the handout, between the town and Concord Heights. A draft is available from the town clerk also, and is also posted on the town website. It approves an economic development incentive program called a local incentive only. I'll explain what these are. And it authorizes us, what more, to execute the tax increment financing agreement. So a little bit of background. Next slide, please. Project consists of 83 units of affordable housing located Junction Village. For those of you that don't know, right adjacent to the back part of the prison, on property that was given to the CHDC by the state in 2013, with restrictions that it could be used only for open space and affordable housing. The proposal before us has about eight acres associated with the assisted living facility, and about eight acres associated with open space. Next slide, please. The background on this is recalling a town meeting in 2017, there was an approval of a community preservation appropriation of $350,000, and subsequently, in additional town meetings, additional money bringing that CPC appropriation to $1 million. And there was also $1 million in free cash given to the, allocated to the project. In the proposal, it was submitted by Grantham, it included an annual payment of $75,000 to the town as taxes, and a ground lease to CHDC, who actually owns the land. Next slide, please. Part of the ability for Grantham to do this was to apply for tax credits, and that's an annual process. They've applied twice, and not too unexpectedly, they've been turned down. The third round of financing, which is tax credits, which is coming up now, at the end of the second, Grantham was told to do some additional tasks. There was some indication that this third round might be a little bit more productive than the last two. And one of the tasks was to get the official tax liability squared away with the town, as estimated by the town assessor. Next slide, please. So how does this work? So there's a Massachusetts general law that creates an economic development incentive program, and part of it is a local option only, which applies just to us, the town. If granted, it allows the select board to create essentially an economic opportunity area, which would be the area associated with the land for Junction Village, on the proposed site. To be able to grant that, which is granted by the state, the application has to have certain, meet certain requirements. The requirement that allows the Junction Village one to be supportable is that it creates new jobs. So it's granted, it allows the select board to go ahead and execute this agreement. So, next slide. So what is this thing called a TIF? A TIF is a program embedded in this law that I just mentioned to you, that allows the local jurisdiction, the town in this case, to reduce the valuation of the property by a certain percentage, and then assess taxes on that. This Junction Village is a commercial enterprise, and so what the TIF allows you to do is take an enterprise that's worth whatever it is, is a commercial venture, and reduce its valuation, and then apply the same tax rate that we all face to that reduced property valuation. The property valuation for the projects would vary over the period that we're talking about, a little different than our private property. Ours is assessed by the assessor, we all face the same rate, but commercial properties' assessment is based also on how well the establishment is doing, so very profitable ones pay more. So the property valuation for the project going forward would vary over the period, based on a percentage reduction in valuation, the TIF, the tax rate, it changes, and the commercial success of the property. commercial success of the property. Next page, please. So, and this is fictitious, but here's an example. An assessed valuation of ten million dollars, given our current tax rate, would have a liability of one-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars. If a TIF was instituted at sixty percent, you would reduce the value of the property from ten to four million, and then apply the same tax rate and come up with a different assessed tax liability. So how a TIF works. Next slide, please. For this particular TIF, although it's allowable to be for twenty years, we're going to write it only for seventeen, the property value according to the assessor was thirteen thousand nine and change. Million, thank you. And the valuation reduction is seventy-seven percent. And what that does is that brings the tax for this current year to about forty-five thousand dollars and change, then plus the thirty-thousand-dollar ground lease that was part of the original proposal, that brings the tax liability to the seventy-five thousand dollars that was contained in the original proposal. So the next slide is just the same as the first slide. I'll emphasize before we take questions that this is still a draft, and I want to thank the assessor, the town manager, Walter Rohanian and Liz Russk for working very hard over this last week to get a draft of this agreement in place, so it could be shared with you here tonight. It may undergo some modest changes as we go to Town Meeting, but the principle is the same. The assessed value is reduced by an amount to which the tax rate is applied, and that becomes the tax liability for the property. So that's the warrant article. I'd be happy to entertain questions.
If I remember correctly, oh, Janet Rothrock, six-eighteen Nurse Oak Hill Road. If I remember correctly, when the Muse was built, there were three-hundred-and-fifty units. I'm not sure how many were affordable, but a bunch. And the town got a million dollars given to Concord, I think largely to make up for increased services, for instance, ambulance use. And in this case, we're being asked to give more, even more money to this project, aside from the million dollars in CPC funding. Do we expect increased or decreased services associated with this project or the occupants of it?
Well, first, we're not being asked to give any more money to the project. We're being asked to reduce the assessed valuation, so that the tax liability and the ground lease will be consistent with what was budgeted by the project when it was approved by Town Meeting. So we're not being asked to contribute any more money.
Right, I understand that, but in effect, we will get less money than we might have anticipated? Am I correct?
No, we're, this TIF gives us exactly the money that was put in the budget that was approved at Town Meeting, not the budget wasn't approved at Town Meeting, but the allocation of CPC funds and the free cash allocation. There was no other statement about additional taxes. I don't know the answer to your services question, Mr. Rohanian?
Hello. I'd like to use...
No, you have to either come up here. Why don't you come up here, because you might get more questions? And you can just introduce yourself.
Hello, Walter Rohanian, four-eighty-eight Elm Street, Concord, Mass. Managing Director for the Grantham Group, which is the manager and developer of the proposed assisted living community. So unlike the Muse, this will not have school-aged children in, in that, living there. It's for senior citizens, sixty-two and older, primarily elderly residents that will be living there. There is a chance, obviously, for additional ambulance, for E-nine-one-one calls that could come, for sure. In not knowing much about the Muse, this is eighty-three units, fifty, just over fifty percent of the units are to residents earning sixty percent or below the area median income, and the remaining fifty percent units, which is another forty, is for residents earning less than one-hundred-and-fifty percent of the area median income. So this is a hundred percent rent-restricted community.
Next question. Stefan Bader, Seven River Street. The language in the draft, the language in the draft TIF agreement, excuse me, includes reference to a cap of three million dollars over the term of the TIF. Two questions about that. Is that the cap on the tax savings to your for-profit corporation?
Correct.
And does that include the savings on the personal property as well, or just the real estate taxes?
On both.
So the property taxes plus the personal property taxes combined...
Correct.
Cannot exceed three million? So that's what the town is leaving on the table, basically, to support your project?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Hartman. I live at sixteen Concord Green. I'm a member of the Finance Committee, but I'm speaking for myself. First of all, I'm wondering, do we have a number that would show us the difference between the amount of taxes you would pay at the full assessed value versus the amount you would pay if we forgive property tax through this TIF agreement? Does anybody have a number of what that amount would be?
It was about a hundred-and-eighty-some-odd thousand? Am I right in line? Okay.
And the present value of that discounted back at seventeen years at, say, let's say four percent? Do we have a total?
So it was seventy, I think it was going to be roughly a seventy percent, seventy-seven percent, if I remember correctly.
That was in the draft, yes. So have we calculated the total, meaning, so you're looking at an annuity of about one-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars that you won't be paying in property tax over seventeen years? Is that correct?
No, so let's just back up for a minute.
Go ahead.
So right now, we know that their property is generating no revenue whatsoever?
Right, I understand.
Okay, okay. And then, secondly, is the project is always committed to be able to pay between the town and CHDC up to seventy-five thousand dollars, part of it towards a ground lease and part of it towards real estate taxes.
Was that ever, was that ever approved at Town Meeting?
So the, the budget, the one stop that we had submitted that was given to the town itself, did have that number in there, yes. And it was actually presented in front of the Finance Committee as well.
It was not approved at all?
But not in approval.
Not approved, okay. Can I, okay, could we get back to my original question?
Sure.
So if we were to assess your property at its fair market value...
Yeah.
And we were to put a property tax on that, what is the difference between that and what we, the town will receive at the seventy-seven percent exemption? And what, and so that's over seventeen years. So if we pull that back to the present value, what's the number we're talking about?
So the assessed value would be approximately one-hundred-and-eighty-some-odd thousand. In between the amount that's going to real estate taxes and to CHDC, it's seventy-five thousand dollars.
So that's about one-hundred-and-twelve?
Sure.
Over seventeen years?
Correct.
Discounted back? Does anybody have a calculator? It's a big number.
Your point.
Okay, thank you.
But I would just add, if I could just add, though, that the issue, I understand your point, of course, but the other way to look at that is if we assessed it at full market value, the project wouldn't happen.
I don't, say, I'm sorry, say that again?
If the project was assessed at full market value, the one-hundred-and-eighty-seven, whatever it is, the project wouldn't happen.
So let me make sure I understand what you're saying. So if, if we don't forgive some, you're saying that Grantham will, will in fact walk away? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, unfortunately, the project can't sustain itself with that full tax liability.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Okay, I saw the draft of the agreement, and I'm wondering, is this still in play? So is this still negotiable? Because I understand we're in negotiation. So this is, is that true, that this is still in play?
It's still in draft form, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dori Keo, fifty-one MacArthur Road, member of the League of Women Voters, but speaking for myself. After Town Meeting of 2017, as Mike noted, and two million dollars was given to Grantham or promised to Grantham, there was an agreement between the town, the CHDC, and Grantham. And one of the, one of the statements in that, in that agreement was, "The developer agrees not to request any financial support from the town, other than the town funds for the construction and development of the project, and acknowledges that the town is under no obligation to provide any additional financial support." That is written quite clearly, "We're not under any obligation." When one reads that, however, the eye of most people in this town reading that, it means they're not going to be asking for any more. And this was actually noted by, by Mike Lawson in the meeting of the FinCom, when he spoke to the FinCom about the, the procedures that were planned for 2017, and stated, this is on April of 2017, April ninth, he, he noted that the Select Board is committed to continuing the work with the Department of Correction. He also noted that the memorandum of understanding between the town of Concord and Grantham stipulates that if Town Meeting is approved in 2017, additional funds will not be requested for this project. So the understanding is that no financial support would be, would be requested in this. However, in the state explanation, so I'm coming to my question...
Sure.
Which is, in the state explanation, called Smart Growth, Smart Energy Tools, District Improvement Financing, DIF, which is also referred to in the warrant article, and the TIF, the Tax Increment Financing, it states, "The TIF provides a direct upfront benefit to a developer in the form of tax relief. The money saved on taxes helps to pay the project's construction costs." So in the agreement, it states that there'll be no funds sought for extra, for, for constructions costs. This, in the state explanation of a TIF, says it's saving money for, for construction costs. So I'm asking you, is it appropriate for the town to be even considering filing this application, which is the essence of a public-private partnership, something that the town has considered long and discussed in great detail over these years? So I'm answering this not to you, Mr. Rohanian, but to Mr. Lawson.
Well, that's why it's in front of Town Meeting.
I'm, I'm asking you if it's actually, if it's appropriate and legal.
I think it is. I, I think your reading of, of those documents, I think, are not consistent with mine. No additional funds are being asked.
Absolutely.
This is exactly the same financial package that was presented at Town Meeting when it needed...
What Town Meeting?
When it, huh?
At what Town Meeting?
When we approved the CPC appropriation and the free cash allocation.
This is financial support in that we are not asking Grantham to spend money. We are not giving them money. They are not asking us, hey, town of Concord, give us two million or three million dollars. But what they are asking for is support, financial support. And that means that the town is saying, we are abating, waiving, in other words, the part that you would be paying. I agree that the town obviously wants affordable housing. This is wonderful. But I also don't agree to say, if you don't play by our rules, we're leaving. The town has been very generous. And I would like, remind people that when this land became available, and the solicitation of interest was sent out, there were twelve respondents. It's not as if this piece of blighted property is not wanted by other people who might, might prefer to come here, and might not be eighty-three units. And this is not the time to argue, as I know Mr. Lawson is going to remind me, but I do ask people to think about the question.
Yes, he is.
Yes, that's correct. But I, I thought I'd preempt you on that one, but I, but I am serious that, I, I have a question, and that is, is this really part of what we promised as a town, what we agreed to? I doubt it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's free.
This is a short question. Carlin Reed, eighty-three Wits End. Regarding the ground lease payment, did I hear you say that it's thirty thousand dollars, or is it thirty-five thousand dollars? And if it isn't thirty-five thousand dollars, why not?
Yep, so there is a development agreement that's between Grantham Group and the CHDC that says the ground lease payment will be upwards, up to thirty-five thousand dollars. So the way that we actually currently have the TIF generated is we're assuming approximately sixty-five thousand dollars would actually go towards real estate taxes, and about ten thousand dollars would be going to CHDC on the ground lease.
Next question.
Sure.
Would you consider increasing that total dollar amount, so that the small grants program, which is funded by the ground lease, would get their full thirty-five thousand dollars?
We would love to be able to do it. The issue that we have is the, the land itself is deed restricted. It's, which means that it's now rent-restricted. I can't increase the rents because of the fact that the ground lease or the taxes have increased dramatically, and that's the issue that we're here, that is the reason why we're here today, is there's capped revenue of what we can get for rent, even though we're going to have a tremendous amount of expenses in our operation.
Thank you. Ms. Lauer?
Ruth Lauer, Kais Road. We've had discussions over several years on this project, and, you know, certainly, we've put Grantham Group through hoops, and they have, you know, come through, but now we have this new guy here called Concord Heights, ALF.
Sure.
I think we need, by Town Meeting, more information about that, because I don't know that the regional housing people know them, or planning, or any of the other players know who they are.
So Christopher Heights Assisted Living is always meant to be the name of what the assisted living community will be. So in essence, the legal name is actually going to be Junction Village Heights, ALF LP. And you're correct, in the warrant article, we do have Concord Heights, ALF LP. When we actually went to go register the name, believe it or not, Concord Heights is actually taken. It's a housing complex in Springfield, I found out. So the good news is, is the people in West Concord wanted a Junction Village Association to the name, and still legally it will be. The name has been officially registered. It's Junction Village Heights, ALF LP, doing business as Christopher Heights of Concord.
So there'll be a fresh handout with a fresh name?
There will be, correct.
Okay. And then, can I skip to the end? I'm not really fond of numbers, everybody knows that. Seventy-seven percent. What, what kind of number is that? Is that what everybody else gets?
So what we did is we met with Lane, and we reviewed the project itself, and he, and him and his team came up with an assessed value. And so for us to be able to get to a tax and a ground lease that was both appropriate for CHDC and the town, based within our seventy-five thousand dollars, the, the TIF ended up being seventy-seven percent.
And, and that could be refigured over the seventeen years?
The percentage, once it's set in stone, will not be refigured, no. It's, once the TIF is in place, it's a mechanism that will last through the entire, the entire term. What will be guaranteed is the seventy-five thousand dollars. Just hypothetically, let's say the assessed value is not as robust as maybe the assessor's currently thinking today. So let's say, instead of us assuming that it was going to be a sixty-five thousand dollar tax, and only ten thousand to CHDC, if the assessed value came in at forty-five thousand, the remaining thirty thousand will go to CHDC. The amount from, from us, from the developer, from the project, has always been promised as seventy-five thousand dollars. So when we structure the ground lease, whatever shortfalls could happen potentially on the real estate, on the tax side, will be caught by the CHDC.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Marjorie Daggett, eighty Deaconess. I just wanted to ask about the amount of the assessment. One of your slides gave a number, I think it was thirteen-point-eight or nine, and in this draft form, the assess, the number is nineteen million, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight.
So the, the actual total development cost of this project is close to twenty million dollars at this point?
So...
The, the, the cost of construction and development has just continued to rise?
So if you take twenty million, just for rounding, you take twenty million, and you figure at fourteen-point-two-three per a thousand, which was this last year's tax assessment, you, you get a tax of two-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-one. And so the, what...
Sure, but the...
The other number that I don't understand is, this... The other number that I don't understand is, this draft talks about 15 years, but you're talking about 17 years. Which is it?
So, a couple things. Development cost is not the same as the valuation that the assessor puts on the project. So there's always going to be a difference. And I don't tend to know the reasons why, and that would be a question for Lane. There is a 17-year TIF, and the reason why is there is a tax credit, we're applying for these tax credits, which we've talked about a number of times. There's a tax credit investor who's in the project for 15 years. They don't take their credits until the project lease is up, which is going to be approximately two years. So 15 and 2 is where we came up with the 17, is to protect the investment during that time.
But it's 15 in this draft agreement. Is it going to change?
Correct, it would be 17 years.
It will be 17?
Correct.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to clarify is, people have asked how much you're losing. On the basis of a 20 million, for 15 years, the town is losing roughly 3.3 million. But if I understand this correctly, when the sum of all of the, you know, of all of the taxes paid, when it hits $3,000, $3 million, then the 77% goes away. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we say what we're losing, is I think we need to also look at what we're gaining. Why is this project even still on our radar? And the reason why is it's the 83 units of affordable housing that it's going to bring to the Town of Concord. It's going to create 30 jobs for the Town of Concord. And I think those are big wins. Once again, right now, the project isn't getting anything in tax revenue.
That has may be, but there are other developments possible. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Clarice Gordon, 100 Newbury Court. You may have answered part of this in the last, because I was wondering about the discrepancy between the 15 years and the 17 years. And I'm also wondering, since we know more about the obligations of the town in, say, five years or 10 years, what is the rationale for the particular number of years, instead of a shorter period?
So, and I just, in the previous question had answered it, we're applying for these tax credits, and the tax credit investor is in the project for 15 years. They're not allowed to really, they're not allowed to take their tax credits until the project is fully leased, which would be about two years. So that's why it's the 15 and the 2, which is 17. And it gives them the protection during their entire time they're here.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Rick Schubel of Deacon Haines Road. I didn't notice anything about Concord resident preferences?
Sure. So there is a housing preference for the Town of Concord, for its...
How long?
It is, Mike would actually know better than I would.
Sure.
Can you answer that, some of the...
Oops.
The fair housing law?
Uh-huh.
The preference has to be initial local preference. After that, the preference asks for quality fair housing. They want to save the initial local preference.
For how long?
It's in the...
So, I understand. So is that one year, five years?
It's during the first initial 83 unit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see. Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. All 83 units to fill.
It can't substitute for...
I got you, okay.
...potential eligible individuals.
Okay.
Anything to talk about the street housing?
No, I understand, thank you. And the other question is, do you think you're going to get 30 nurse, long-term care workers in Concord? Most of the places I've gone to long-term care facilities, they tend to be immigrants. And so, I mean, I may be, I may not, I may be wrong here, but do you really think you're going to have 30 people in Concord working there? I mean, it would be great if we did, but...
Completely understood. It might not be people that directly live in Concord, but they'll have a full opportunity to be able to apply for the job.
So, we'll get, okay. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you very much.
Coming back with another quick question, or two quick questions. One is on the idea of the types of jobs. I know that talking with people at the hospital and at Newbury Court, there's a great deal of difficulty in getting jobs. I think that perhaps what I have in mind, that what you're thinking about, so could you describe the types of jobs that you're thinking of?
Yep. So we'll have an executive director who will oversee the entire community. We have a marketing director who'll be a leasing agent. We have a maintenance director. We have a executive chef. We also have nurses and a social worker. We also have certified nursing assistants and home health aides, housekeepers, cooks, activities director and activity assistants.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And the other question is, this came into the public only today, this draft, at 11:30 this morning. And many of us, even until last weekend, were not even aware that you were going to be discussing the specifics of a draft agreement. So I wonder if I might ask, that there are people here today, and there are many more, who would like more questions. Is there a procedure, when one is getting a TIF from the state, to hold public hearings? Is there any kind of a procedure for that?
So ours will be town meeting, to discuss it, and then after that, it will go to the state to get approved.
I see that.
So the town meeting approves it first, or doesn't approve it, and then if they do approve it, it will go to the state for approval.
No, I understand that. But what I'm asking for, is there another opportunity for Concord residents who just were able to read this today, at noon today, which really doesn't give much time or much awareness of this? Would there be, and this is up to the Select Board again, to hold another meeting that would be an opportunity for people to get more information?
We'll take that under advisement. The TIF was difficult to construct, and the warrant, the article in the warrant required it to be available before the public meeting today. We wish we would have had another week or so to continue the negotiations on this. So I take your point, and we'll talk with...
I hope you will. And again, I wish that at the February 10th Select Board meeting, that you had been specific enough to say that it had been your hope, to have this grant written out for today, because I think we were all taken quite unaware. Thank you.
Cynthia Wood, 362 Bedford Street. I'm kind of concerned about the costs and benefits of this. And what I would like to see is some evidence that there's a need for 83 units of affordable assisted living in Concord. And also, I'd like to understand whether, given how few Concord residents will benefit over the longer term, does that justify the foregone tax revenues and the additional funds that the town is providing? I think, you know, this obviously has been a process that's gone on for a while, and I think we all need to be sort of brought up to speed on it, and understand what the thinking is, and how this is good for Concord, other than as a means to avoid a 40B.
Thank you. Right. Seeing no...
Nope.
Just as a matter of public service, Dean Banfield, Chair of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has invited Mr. O'Hanian to give a presentation to the Finance Committee at our meeting on March 5th. So if anyone is looking to, you know, find further information, you may attend that meeting, and we'll allow for some amount of public comment, but if it becomes too interrupted, we'll have to move on to our business.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Walter.
Mike, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stephen, you had a...
Okay. Yes, on the handout that we got tonight, I just didn't understand one of the calculations. It's on page two. I thought I saw on the slides that the assessed valuation was 13,900 and something. And it says here, "The base valuation shall be the assessed value of the property for the fiscal year 2021, in the amount of $1,444,000." I don't understand how these calculations are working.
Do you want to take a seat?
The base valuation is as it exists today. Sorry. The base valuation is how the land existed. Hello? Hello? Is this... Ah, there it goes. Thanks, Mark.
Stephen Crantown, manager. The base valuation is as it exists pre-build. The 13 million is the valuation after, as built. After the, so 19 million gets you 13 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a comment?
The number, the calculation for taxation over the term of the TIF was about 2.2 million in unassessed or uncollected taxation.
Thank you. Thanks very much. The next article is a petition article, Municipal Fleet Electrification Report. Brian Folds. Brian?
Hello?
It's coming.
It's coming. Oh, there it is. So, Brian Folds, 33 Riverdale. I'm here to do a citizens petition to get another report. Hopefully a last one. So, the article is to look at our current fleet for the town, and to have the department heads write a report on how we're going to fulfill a goal of electrifying that fleet. And the theme for this presentation is going to be about taking actions. So, I'll go through it. So here is the wording of the article. This appears a couple times in the presentation, so I'm not going to read through it. I'll go through that later. If you don't know me, I have worked on a few committees in town. I tend to focus on sustainability efforts. And, you know, this has happened while my kids have been growing up. I have had time while they go to our schools, and get a great education. But one of the first committees I was on was to look at the drive trains of school buses. And that work led me into working with the Energy Futures Task Force, and I'm currently the Chair of the Climate Action Advisory Board, but this is, I'm not acting on their behalf. This is my own petition. And, yeah, and I've helped people since about 2011 with solar, electric cars, and other things. So, in the media, we hear a lot about climate change. And a lot of people say, oh, it was 63 degrees today. It's February, that's wonderful, I like warm weather. And it's a good joke, but really, climate change, as the National Security Department labeled it, is a threat multiplier. It doesn't make things, it makes things a little worse. And it's because it adds energy to systems. So, whether it be more ticks in your backyard, or whether it be heat strokes from hot days, or whether it be flood events from heavy rains and downpour, that all has to do with the ability of the atmosphere to hold more energy. And you can read that list there of some of the effects. And if you look at that map on the right there, that's from a study, an academic paper done, that looked at the carbon footprint of individuals in certain towns. And you can see that urban people generally have a lower personal carbon footprint, and people in rural areas also tend to have a lower carbon footprint than suburban people. And in the US, we have a very high per capita footprint to begin with. China is leading us in a total, but as individuals, they have a lot more people, that's why they're leading. And the governor has started to address this, our Republican governor. And these are a couple quotes from his State of the Commonwealth address, where he is changing the target from an 80% reduction by 2050 to a net zero goal for 2050, which is 100% reduction. And the reason he's doing this is because we need to take decisive action. We need to not keep setting goals and promises, but actually start to show action. And, I've lost the presentation because I hit the wrong button. There we go. And this is why. So, what you see here is a chart from NOAA that shows our increasing concentration of CO2 in the atmosphere, increasing nitrogen oxides, increase in methane, and the chlorofluorocarbons and so forth. But we keep setting, you know, goals with the Paris Climate Accord, with other big goals that we set, but the proof is in, you know, the scientific measurements. And they have not turned those charts around. So what can Concord do? Concord has done an analysis of our carbon footprint as a town in 2008 and 2016. Over that eight-year period, we reduced our carbon footprint as a town by 6%. Not very impressive, seeing most of those gains came from fuel efficiency standards and things that were out of our control that happened anyway. But we did put a lot of effort in to make things happen. But this quote here is from a consultant's report on this data, that said that if we decarbonize our electricity, and we switch half of our vehicles over to electricity, and half of our home heating over to that electricity, a 60% reduction. I think everyone in this room, in the next 30 years, is going to buy a car to replace their current car. In the next 30 years, they'll buy a new furnace. So we need to have a plan on how to help people switch from what they do today to a different fuel. Not compromise in what they do, but just fuel it differently. And so here are the town goals that currently exist. We have a goal of a 25% reduction by 2020. And with the Article 50 passage in 2017, we've actually accomplished that. And it's due to decarbonizing electricity. It's very cheap and very easy to do, and really knocks down our carbon footprint. An 80% reduction by 2050. The light plant has a strategic plan of getting 5,000 electric vehicles on the road by 2025. And we're doing quite well. We've got over 400 residents in town with electric vehicles that are being adopted at the rate that we'd like them to be, to hit that target. And there was some other studies, but what's happening is, the town is not leading by example. I'll show you. This is our current clean vehicle fleet. Out of the 100-plus vehicles that we have in our fleet, we have an electric school bus, we have two Nissan Leafs, and an eight-year-old Ford Focus Electric that the light plant bought way back in 2012. Which all are great. And we've converted F-250 for the DPW, and the bus for the Council on Aging to hybrids, to increase their fuel efficiency. And the police department has a couple plug-in hybrids now, so they reduce their idling. These are all great things, but the total number is eight vehicles out of 100-plus in the town. And this affects us. This affects public health. Living next to roadways, the EPA and other health agencies have identified that people who live near highways, they get affected by the smoke that comes out of our tailpipes. These are negative health outcomes. And so, what will this report help us do? It'll help departments work together on best practices for transition, for adopting electric vehicles, and understanding what's out there from their coworkers. There's lists of vehicles available today, from big, heavy vehicles, whether it be a school bus, or a garbage truck, down to, you know, Nissan Leafs and little vehicles. There's a lot of options out there, but people don't know about them. So, we also need to know, what are the roles and responsibility of different departments? One of the issues is electric vehicle infrastructure. Should that be something that the light department is putting in, under ratepayers' money? Or is that something that taxpayers, through the departments and the town budget, should be putting in that infrastructure? And in general, we need to plan to say, if we're going to electrify these hundred-some-odd vehicles in our fleet, how are we going to lay out the infrastructure, and what projects make sense? Let's not do a charger every time we buy a car, and start doing trenching. Let's put the investment in to do one project, get it done right, and then buy the cars to fill it in. And why now? Why is it so important that we start to have this plan and start to execute on this? The cost of batteries right now, for a 1 kilowatt-hour battery, is about $156. That is down from almost $1,200 10 years ago. These lithium-ion batteries are getting cheap, fast, which means more options are coming available, and we can do this. Financially reasonably, we can do this. It has lower maintenance costs, lower fueling expenses, there's other good benefits, but that purchase price used to be the barrier, based on... throughout the buildings and towns and different departments. Vehicle-to-grid is a new technology where we can use the batteries on these vehicles to discharge back into the grid when we're all running air conditioners and have that peak time. That will lower the rates that we get charged at the light plant because we're lowering those peak expenses. So, that's technology that we can do, but we need to have the infrastructure and the vehicles in place to access them. And here is the outline in my article that urges, and urges, by the way. So, I didn't want to lock anyone into doing anything. I want this idea to go forward. It doesn't have to be exactly what I envisioned on day one, but I've urged the Select Board to do something along these lines, which is establish a baseline of our vehicles, where they are, how many we have, identify potential alternatives that are electric, assess the infrastructure needs, identify potential funding sources, grants, and other kinds of tax funding opportunities, identify what the barriers are. I know that we're not going to find a patrol car that is electric. They have a, the police department requires those vehicles have a 75 mile-an-hour crash rating for rear impact. They don't have one of those in electric yet. They have 11 vehicles that qualify, and they're all really poor in efficiency. Police Department just got a hybrid, which is great, but it's 24 miles per gallon. It's not really, it's great that it's the best option they had. And they should be able to do that when they need it and meet their needs. But if one becomes available, we should take a strong look at it and be prepared to do so. And then conclude with a pathway forward to start to electrify this fleet at a faster rate. Because change happens quickly. You can see in the top picture there, 1900, Fifth Ave in New York City, there is one car, and all the rest are horses and wagons. 13 years later, you can only find one horse. They're all cars. That's how quickly change can happen. And this here is a forecast from the working group over at the light plant about our adoption rate of these electric vehicles as residents. So, yeah, change can happen quite quickly, especially when the price of the battery really drops. And finally, I want to say that there are plenty of resources available. So, the one in yellow there is the town website, where you can find all kinds of information as a resident. Everything else on there is some kind of financial incentive. And if you want to, you can go afterwards to the website, and the PDF has links to all of my references and all of these available options. And that's the wording of my article.
Thank you very much.
Available for questions.
Is there any question from the Select Board? Question from the audience? Ms. Ortner?
Dee Ortner, 169 Thoreau Street. Hi, Brian.
Hi.
Brian, my question to you is, how much time do you think that this activity would entail?
I don't think it's, definitely less than a year, probably just a few months.
So, your planning cycle would be from the time of town meeting, if it's approved, probably within the next, before the next town meeting, you would have a plan in place?
Well...
You're hopeful?
I'm hopeful that, I'm urging the Select Board to have a plan in place, and I've offered my help to write this because I do know a lot of the content of this. And it's really, it's the act of having everybody sit around the table for all the departments and then coming up with a plan. That's what I want to see happen. And that shouldn't take more than a year. So, I would say, you know, it should be done by...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, then our next, oh.
Mark White, 233 Independence Road. In general, what's the cost difference between a electric or a fossil-fuel vehicle? Say, for instance, a school bus?
The school bus is, so, I'll give you a couple examples, like a...
Very quickly.
A real quick one. All right. A Gulf, like, there's a direct comparison where there's an electric version and there's a gas version. There is a small increase, a couple thousand dollars, to buy the one with the battery. But there's also a state incentive and a federal incentive that make it actually cheaper to buy that one. So, those kind of vehicles, it's actually less expensive to do the electric version. With the school buses, they are quite expensive. I don't expect us to go forward if it's very expensive. They're about three to four times the cost of a normal bus, and so, we would need to get a grant. And that's what my other article, Article 30, is to address.
So, if the cost is similar for the cars, why not simplify the process and just ask the towns that whenever a vehicle needs to be replaced to make it an electric vehicle as opposed to a gas, and it's, would just be a simpler process with less manpower for the committees?
Yeah. It, there are towns that do that, or there are things in place, which is our electric-first-only policies. That could be one way to go. I think that it's more important for us to develop a plan than to require each individual department to figure it out on their own. I think we need to break out of the silos and talk more. I think it would be a better result. How about that?
Thank you. Seeing no more questions, thank you very much, Brian. Next is a General Bylaw Amendment for Fossil Fuel Infrastructure, Alice Kaufman. Alice?
Hi there. I'm Alice Kaufman, 1615 Lowell Road, and I'm speaking for the Select Board on this one this evening.
Good evening.
Let's see who's slide.
It's coming.
I can see him there. Oh, there we go. So, let's go forward. Now, Mr. Lawson moves that we take affirmative action. Next slide. So, this article seeks to limit the expansion of fossil-fuel infrastructure in Concord by requiring all new construction and major renovations to be fossil-fuel-free. This article does not affect the vast majority of properties in Concord, and it does not require existing homes to switch fuel sources. This measure is the logical next step to ensure that Concord can achieve its stated goals voted by town meeting in 2017 in Article 51. That article, as you heard from Brian, compels Concord to meet both the Paris Climate Accord and the State's Global Warming Solutions Act. Next slide. From fires ravaging Australia to island nations at risk, to fires and catastrophic flooding in this country, there is little doubt that we face a climate emergency. We have a global imperative to take immediate steps for our own survival. Reversing these devastating impacts of a change in climate requires major transformations to global society. Next slide, please. The Energy Futures Task Force, report to the Select Board in 2017, established a reliable, equitable, and environmentally sound energy plan that made sure that the Concord Municipal Light Plant would have long-term viability. The plan also requires that they address climate change, be integrated into the strategic plan of the light plant, and it promotes intergenerational equity. The goal, the next slide, I think, oh, maybe not, yeah. The next, so, the goals of the plan that were also included called for 25% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2020, 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, and a commitment to 100% non-carbon-emitting electricity by 2030. These are all steps that we are moving forward on at the light plant and throughout town. The next slide, please. Concord has a threefold strategy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Brian spoke about electric vehicles. So, we are, it's a combination of energy efficiency, of renewable, a shift into renewable energy supplies, which we are doing, and electrification of our cars, homes, and buildings. The Concord Municipal Light Plant has integrated these goals into their strategic plan, and they are pursuing opportunities to meet the commitment for 100% non-carbon-emitting electricity through the purchase of renewable energy and renewable energy credits. At the end of 2018, Concord had achieved a 56% non-carbon-emitting fuel mix and is well in its way to meeting its goal. The light plant's strategic plan includes what's called beneficial electrification and follows on the heels of a successful program in town to help move customers from oil heat to a cleaner-burning, high-efficiency electric heat pump. Next slide, please. So, why Article 40? It is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of town residents from harmful effects of air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions contributing to climate change, and from fuel leaks and explosions that threaten town residents. Next slide. The town's consulting report states that 60% of our emissions come from the built environment. More than a third of our greenhouse gas emissions come from natural gas and fuel oils used for heating and for hot water. Next slide. This article seeks to limit the expansion of natural gas infrastructure, new construction, and major renovations. Major renovations are increasing the size of a home by 50, a building by 50% or greater. Allowing new fossil-fuel infrastructure commits us to increased air pollution and increased greenhouse gas emissions for the next 30 to 50 years while the pipes are in the ground. While limiting new greenhouse gas emission sources for heat and hot water in new construction seems small to the magnitude of the problem, it starts to build the future that we all want. The requirements of Article 40 apply to all new construction for which a building permit is required. It also applies to renovations that increase the size of the original building by 50% or more. Next slide, please. So, can a waiver be granted? The article allows for waivers to be, to the provisions of the bylaw, providing that the applicant demonstrates technical or financial impediments that would make the project infeasible. Specifically stated in the bylaw, our provisions that affordable housing would be eligible for a waiver, as well as the use of cookstoves and commercial kitchens. Next slide, please. Exempt from the bylaw are fuel pipes for the use of, as purpose for just backup of electrical generators and for portable propane appliances, like those used for outdoor cooking and heating. Those are exempted from the bylaw. Next slide. Is there an appeals process? Yes. While the building commissioner issues the building permits, the town manager in this bylaw is responsible for determining who or what body will, A, enforce the bylaw, and B, hear and resolve complaints of a permit denial. Slide, next slide, please. So, we are not alone in proposing this measure. In the fall of 2019, Brookline passed a similar article at their special town meeting. Belmont, Newton, Lexington, and Arlington are all anticipating similar measures at upcoming town meetings. And the last slide is the same as the second one. Select Board urges affirmative action.
Thank you, Alice. Does the Select Board have any questions for Alice?
How soon would this take effect?
So, we talked with Brookline this week. They have not yet heard from the Attorney General's office on whether the language of the bylaw that they passed has been approved by the Attorney General. So, if that was November, December, January, February, that's three months they haven't heard. We're estimating, or guesstimating, that it'll take some number of months before we hear affirmatively from the AG's office. So, I'm optimistic that sometime towards the end of 2021, we will have in place a bylaw if passed by town meeting, the AG's approval, the town manager's commitment and ability to set up the committee that will be the appeals board. Right, the number of things have to happen, like the building inspector has asked for a building checklist against which he could determine whether a building permit should be permitted or denied. So, there are a number of steps that realistically would probably take close to the end of 2021 to put in place.
Thank you. Is there any additional questions? Thank you very much. Oh, sorry. Ruth?
Yeah. Ruth Lauer, Kaiser Road. Why wasn't this article heard by the planning board and worked through? They have the, you know, the sort of structure for bylaws. And following on to that, I didn't see in here the start date. Usually, on the planning board, the start date is determined as the language is prepared. Thank you.
Good questions. So, the start date, I think, is one that we should, we'll work with the Select Board to determine and have an amendment to have a hand at a town meeting to decide. It's difficult to know when you're expecting the AG's response. So, the question about the planning board, we talked with the planning board, and this is being provided as a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. So, it kind of falls outside of their purview. And as a general, we cannot institute this as a zoning bylaw because state law doesn't allow us to restrict expansion of fossil fuel as a zoning bylaw because it changes both the building code and the ability for energy provision. So, it has to be a general bylaw. And I guess it's, unless I misunderstood my conversation with planning boards, maybe not with somebody...
But it does, I'm sorry, it does scoop up some responsibilities of folks in the planning realm, you know, the building inspector, the people who are granting permits and that sort of thing.
So, we have met with the planning director and the building inspector. We are on the agenda to meet with the planning board, I think, in March, to have a more robust conversation. But the first reason getting this to be able to come to town meeting was the determination that it fell outside the purview of the planning board as it's a general bylaw and not a zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Mark White, 233 Independence Road in Bentley Building Corp., the local development company. During the December 2nd meeting, you had mentioned that you're compiling costs, that you thought you would add, that this bylaw would add to the cost of a new home. Were you able to come to any conclusions with that?
So, there, I don't have it with me. There is a document that was being developed, I think, by Charlie Parker, that has done quite extensive research on what the building costs are. I think the general scope is that it is anticipated that there, it is more expensive to build, as I think you and I had talked at one point, that electrifying a home requires two things: electrification, whatever the heating source is that you choose to put in, and a tighter building envelope. And across the board, it seems like it's about a 5% higher cost overall on the total construction cost of the home. So, it adds about 5% to the cost of construction. That's, you know, you're, I'm going to defer to you on cost because you're someone who are the expert.
You're just starting to look at it now, but we're estimating for the average house that we build in town is going to cost about an additional $40,000 over the existing cost. Did you give any thought to cooking, gas stops? I know I saw the exemption for a restaurant, but a lot of the homeowners like to cook with gas and just where Brookline exempted it, was there a reason Concord did not?
So, it is not exempt from the bylaw, so you would be expected to install an electric stove or an induction stove. I think that you will take under advisement your suggestion that we consider whether a propane gasification stove would be acceptable under the bylaw. As is written, it's not, but we might be, I think we should discuss that. Because I think that makes or breaks your ability to build.
Well, how's that process? We say we should talk about that. Who talks about that? How does it get to the...
So, this is one place. We take it under advisement. We talk about whether, you know, I think, so other people know, Mark and I had a conversation, and his point was very well taken, that the amount of the greenhouse gas emissions from a single cook stove in a house is marginal to the cost of having an all fossil-fuel-burning home, and that would we consider the use of propane, which would otherwise be not permitted, whether that would be considered a possibility under the bylaw, at least in the short term. And it seemed reasonable to me, but I haven't had a chance to talk with the Select Board yet.
The other, one other thing was with gas fireplaces, there's an alternative, whether it's more expensive or less expensive for all, for heating, for hot water, for cooking, but there's no alternative for a gas fireplace, other than wood burning, which consumers are moving away from. The units pull a lot of air out of the house, so I'm wondering if you would consider that as well?
So, I think that falls under the same category as you... So this is one place, we take it under advisement, we talk about whether, you know, I think, so other people know, Mark and I had a conversation, and his point was very well taken, that the amount of the greenhouse gas emissions from a single cook stove in a house is marginal to the cost of having an all fossil fuel burning home. And that would we consider the use of propane, which would otherwise be not permitted, whether that would be considered a possibility under the bylaw, at least in the short term. And it seemed reasonable to me, but I haven't had a chance to talk with the select board yet.
And the other, one other thing was with gas fireplaces, there's an alternative, whether it's more expensive or less expensive for all, for heating, for hot water, for cooking, but there's no alternative for a gas fireplace, other than wood burning, which consumers are moving away from. The units pull a lot of air out of the house, so I'm wondering if you would consider that as well.
So I, I think that falls under the same category as you pointed out, that the greenhouse gas emissions from an occasional use of a gas fireplace would be marginal against the cost of a whole, the greenhouse gas load of a whole house being fossil fuel. So I think it's a similar conversation to be had with the select board.
And with the construction with a heat pump, we typically heat our homes as we're going along in the construction process with the furnace, and we put in heavy duty filters to pull all the dust out. From what I understand, you can't use a heat pump while you're under construction because the dust and particulates will get into the unit and pretty much need it, cause it to be replaced. So I'm wondering if any thought was put into allowing temporary heating? I, I see the exemption for temporary appliances in a dimensions heating unit, but I wanted to be a little more specific in terms of temporary heating inside the house, whether we'd be able to do that with propane.
I hadn't considered it, so it's something we should consider. We'll talk about it. It's not something I knew anything about, so that's helpful.
Is that something you and I could talk about?
We can talk about it, we can talk about it with the members of the select board and make a determination. I think that I, it's not something I had heard of, so it's new to me. As I say, I defer to somebody whose business it is to build.
Something you run into all the time in the winter.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good suggestions.
Bob Andrews, Staffordshire Lane. I'm having some, you know, concern about the, the exceptions, you know, that are, you know, going to be made to the, you know, to the bylaw. It's, it's quite clear what the, you know, what the intention is of it, what the goals The, as I, as I understand it, you know, the town manager is going to be the guy with the last word on, on this as to whether things, you know, are or are not in compliance with the, with the bylaw, or whether there's some exception that needs to be made to the bylaw because of some special circumstance. Are there any, you know, criteria, or is there any thought to giving, you know, the town manager criteria to work with in making those decisions about exceptions?
The bylaw actually doesn't make, have the responsibility lie with this, that the town manager. It requires that the town manager create the mechanism to hear complaints and resolve disputes over a denied permit. And so I suppose he could do that on his own, but I would advise that he set up a good, smart board of people who know about this industry to help make that decision and that builders or, you know, or, you know, that somebody from, at least one builder or somebody whose business it is to know this would be on that committee. I, I'm sorry for speaking on your behalf, Stephen, but I hope that that was accurate.
Thank you, Alice.
Okay, thank you.
Our next article is a petition electronic recording of select board executive questions. Mr. Reed.
Okay. So my name is Brooks Reed. I live on Estherbrook Road. And my, uh-oh, did I do?
Don't show up.
All right. And this article asks the citizens of Concord to urge their select board to electronically record its executive session, either audio record or audio visual record executive sessions. I think some people may not be that familiar with the executive session or open meeting law, so I'm going to begin with a quick overview of open meeting law as it applies to executive sessions. Open meeting law, or OML for short, is the law which governs how meetings by public bodies are conducted in Massachusetts. The Attorney General's Open Meeting Law Guide is a plain language guide to the open meeting law. Attorney General's introduction speaks to the transparency, that is, accurate and available information about your government's activities. This is a right for town citizens. One of the ways that transparency is maintained is by the requirement that minutes be taken for all minutes, including executive sessions. So what are these executive sessions? Well, executive session is closed door session. Closed door sessions are allowed for certain, very narrowly defined reasons. Do executive sessions have minutes? Yes, just like open session, minutes are taken. However, the minutes do not have to be released to the public promptly as open session minutes must be released. So minutes taken in a meeting are in draft form until the committee meets a later time to finalize and approve the minutes. The approved minutes are what remain in the public record. This finalization and approval process is not left to chance, but rather must occur in a timely manner. So what is a timely manner? Well, the open, the open meeting law does not specify what a timely manner is, but the Attorney General's office, through the Open Meeting Law Guide, specifies that a timely manner means within about six weeks, that is, within the next three meetings of the select board, in the case of the select board. The Attorney General also frowns on any delay in meeting minute approval. It takes the process very seriously. So for example, the Attorney General's office has made it clear that you can't generally argue that a staff shortage is a justifiable reason or cause of delay. So as a citizen, how do you determine if executive session minutes have been approved? The only indication you have is to look through the open meeting minutes to find entries indicating approval of executive sessions. So I've shown here on the slide, you can see that there is a indication of a approval of an executive session. This is what you'd look for to find approvals. So I engaged in the exercise of determining which executive sessions have had their minutes approved over the time interval of 2016 through 2018. I did this by looking up all the executive sessions which were called by the select board as indicated by agendas, then checked the open, the open meeting minutes to find which executive sessions had had their minutes finalized and approved. And what I found was rather shocking to me, at least twenty sessions had gone at least a year, and in some cases up to four years, without having been approved. So this is obviously drastically more than the Attorney General's idea that six weeks is an appropriate amount of time. So why should we care about this? Well, select board members leave the board, new members do not know what constitutes accurate approved minutes for a meeting they did not attend, if they're a new, a new member of the board, and institutional forgetting of closed door discussions occurs. What might be forgotten? Well, for example, the select board made a million dollar plus spending decision in executive sessions for which the meetings have still not been approved years later. And three of the four, uh, three of the five select board members have left the board, so it's unclear that you could really have accurate minutes of those meetings. The reasons underlying closed door decisions can be lost. So recording of executive sessions will mean that whether or not the select board finalizes and approves executive session minutes in a timely manner, we will still have an accurate record of their closed door deliberations. And I want to give you an example of errors in executive sessions. So about two hours ago, our select board reviewed and approved executive session minutes for a meeting held less than six weeks ago, that is, the minutes were approved in a timely manner. I have a copy of the approval document here. It was handed out at the select board meeting just an hour or two ago. And the approval must list all the persons present at the meeting. So even though this meeting was held less than six weeks ago, or just six weeks ago, all the select board members have apparently forgotten that this meeting was attended by a woman who's not listed as an attending. So here, I went to the video of the entry into executive session and pulled a screenshot, and you can see all the select board members and the town manager are listed as present in the approval of the minutes, but there's a woman here who's not listed. This, I believe, is town council Melissa Allison. And even after six weeks, the select board has forgotten who attended. So if we're waiting years before we approve minutes, I think we have to worry that they may not be accurate. So why record executive sessions? Well... Oh, anyway, I think that's the end, right? Nope, this is funny, I gave you the wrong, I gave you the wrong version of this. But anyway, I hope you'll approve this, this warrant article to make sure that executive sessions get reported, to urge the select board to do so, so that even though there are multi-year delays before the minutes get approved, they still get, the information is not lost.
Thank you. Any questions, select board? Any questions? Seeing none, well...
Hello, Carlin Reed, 83 Wits End. I had a question about the wording of Article Five, or Article 45. It says to urge, urge to the select board to audio record or audio visual record its executive sessions. By the phrase audio visual recording, are you suggesting that Minuteman Media Network be used with, using PEG funds to do the video recording? And if so, why?
Well, my goal is to have information retained, and if Minuteman Media Network was the way to do it, I think that, if that made the most sense, it was the easiest way, I would, I think that would be the best way to do it.
If you are considering that, I would recommend that you appear before a PEG access committee to see whether it is a permissible use of PEG access funds, which is generally designed for public access materials, not something that's generally not public access. So that's a recommendation I have.
So the, the wording requires that, well, the wording implies that the information is eventually released, not immediately. Are you saying that when PEG access does it, the information has to be released immediately? It's not possible to retain it?
It does sound like you need to come before the committee and have us, have a good discussion of that particular area. Second question I have is, the wording also suggests that the recordings be kept for at least three years? Can you explain about the, the three year time period? Because that's different from the current open meeting law requirements or the document retention rules.
Correct. So I believe the readings, the reading of the, the article says that the recordings would be released upon the release of the minutes, the printed minutes of the meeting. And I wanted to put in a, an amount of time for them to retain, a minimum amount of time, and so I put in three years. It wouldn't necessarily have to be that, it could be moved for a different amount of time, but I, I thought I'd put out a, some minimum amount of time to retain the recording after the printed minutes were also released.
Thank you.
So Grimwood 520 Lexington Road. The examples you gave of the select board recording the minutes incorrectly were from like four years ago, you said. More recently, have the select board been putting in their minutes in a more timely manner, or is it just as a few examples from several years ago's that were late?
Well, I looked the entire period from 2016 through 2018, and I looked at that around December of last year. The idea being that I wanted to find a large group of minutes that were at least a year old. And, and I found twenty or more. And then more recently, I don't think there's been a, an increased rate of, of approval, but I didn't really check because those are more recent and I, and they wouldn't have applied to the issue of, of late approval.
It might be more pertinent to understand what's been happening more recently, though.
I can, I can add a little bit to Mr. Reed's. We really did have a very difficult time, and while there's no excuse for it, there was a lot of change in personnel and then a new town manager and records becoming hard to find. Since then, we've identified a new process for taking minutes. We have somebody in the room whose job is to take minutes and get them released. So I think if we looked at that data, you'd, you'd see that there was a period, as Mr. Reed is speaking of, sixteen through eighteen or so, where our, our record era is not very good. And tonight, we approved a lot of executive session minutes to get us up almost totally current. There are no more questions. Next article is Article 46, also by Mr. Reed, Public Posting of Open Meeting Law Complaints. Just give us a second.
All right, so this warrant article proposes to urge the town to vote, to urge the select board to post open meeting law complaints on the town's website. I've asked the town to post open meeting law complaints so that interested members of the public would know that they exist and be able to read those complaints and draw their own conclusions about the validity of complaints which have been filed. The town declined to post my complaints, or any complaints for that matter. As I think this is an important issue, I decided to initiate this warrant article to see if the citizens of the town would urge the select board to post all open meeting law complaints on the town website. First, I want to speak briefly to a law called the open meeting law. I've just mentioned it in the previous article, the OML for short. This law governs the conduct of public bodies, that is, boards and committees. So what happens if a member of the public believes a public body has violated this open meeting law? Well, any member of the public may initiate an open meeting law complaint if that person believes the open meeting law has been violated. The open meeting law spells out a very specific procedure on how to resolve the complaint with the public body. The open, open meeting law complaint process begins with that individual filing a complaint against the public body that's suspected of violating the open meeting law. This complaint must spell out in some detail how you believe the open meeting law was violated. So how does the public body respond to a complaint? The first step is that the public body must meet to review the complaint. The discussion is all part of transparency, to make everyone, including the public, aware that there is an alleged issue which needs to be resolved. So how does the general public come to know that the public body might be discussing an open meeting law complaint? The OML requires that agendas be posted to inform the public about the topics of discussions for an upcoming public body meeting, which may include an open meeting law complaint. So I filed two open meeting law complaints, one in 2018 and one in 2019, and these open meeting law complaints are not mentioned on any agenda, so the public could not have known, could not have become aware that they were going to be discussed. I determined this by making a public records request to our excellent town clerk, asking for her to produce the agendas which mention the minutes, and she came back and said, nope, nothing there that mentions these open meeting law complaints. Besides being a violation of the open meeting law, failure to include discussion of an open meeting law complaint on an agenda means a citizen wishing to stay informed about open meeting law complaints could not have known that the select board would be discussing a complaint because it was not noticed on the agenda. So how else could a concerned citizen have known about the select board's discussion of open meeting law complaints? Well, that concerned citizen could check for mention of open meeting law complaints in meeting minutes, because the open meeting law requires the meeting minutes include a list of all documents and exhibits used at the meeting. That would include the open meeting law complaint itself. Once again, I made a, a document request to our town clerk, asking for any minutes which described the two open meeting law complaints and, which I had filed myself. And the only information that came back was the word complaint appeared without open meeting law on one set of minutes. So two complaints were filed, the only mention was the word complaint appearing once on one set of minutes. So besides being a violation of the open meeting law, a citizen wishing to stay informed about open meeting law complaints could not have known that the select board had discussed an open meeting law complaint by reviewing the minutes, select board minutes, select board meetings. So why should we care if open meeting law complaints are completely hidden from the public? Well, interested members of the public remain unaware that open meeting law complaints exist, and the only way to really find out if there's a complaint is to make repeated public records requests to the town, asking if there are any new complaints. And this is obviously a waste of everybody's time. So most importantly, most importantly, systematic hiding of open meeting law complaints violates the public trust of trans- the public trust of transparency and government. I've asked if other towns post open meeting law complaints, or I have been asked, and the answer is yes. For example, acting posts open meeting law complaints on its website. It has been suggested to me that the town should have discretion about which complaints, if any, that it posts. This approach is problematic, and I'll give you an example. Town council responded to my second open meeting law complaint by calling my complaints, and I'm, I'm going to quote here, frivolous, and the other word used was harassing, and these are the exact words used to describe my complaints. But just a few days ago, the Attorney General's office found that these frivolous and harassing complaints were in fact violations of the open being law, and warned the town that if they were repeated, that they would be considered intentional violations of the law. Clearly, town council's opinion is completely out of step with the Attorney General, and cannot be used to reliably determine if an open meeting law complaint is, has merit. Therefore, I'm asking citizens of the town to vote to urge the select board to post open meeting law complaints, so citizens can look at them and make their own decision on whether they're valid or not.
Thank you. Any questions from the select board? Any questions from the public?
Yeah, hello. Mark Ailis, 62 Prescott Road. I, I just wanted to ask, I like the idea that it says, this kind of posting on the, on the website, you know, aside from the legally OML required, having it on an agenda and having it discussed within fourteen days, says when the component, the complainant asks that it be posted, because some people might prefer to have it a little bit lower profile. So I was wondering if that, you know, how carefully you thought about that? So in other words, the, your motion, warrant article does not say that it would allow a complainant not to request it and, or not to post it, except for the OML required, having it on an agenda announced, and then discussed at a meeting. Am I clear? I'm sorry, I'm a little bit.
Are you saying that you're wondering if a complainant can ask for their, their complaint not to be posted on the town website?
No, you're saying here that you're asking the, as I read it, and I'm just asking for further confirmation, that you're requesting that the town post it when such request, posting is requested by the complainant.
Exactly.
So the complainant may not request, and then the board may not post, but they of course still have to put it on an agenda in a timely manner and discuss it in an open meeting.
Correct. I think that the complainant should have the option of having it posted, it shouldn't be a necessity.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. The next article is petition article, investigation and amendment to the town council bylaw. Mr. Reed.
Thank you. So once again, Brooks Reed, Estorica Road. Let's see. So this article asks the citizens of Concord to vote to urge the select board to form a committee to investigate why an extraordinary number of violations of the town council bylaw were committed over the last four years, and for that committee to then recommend any changes required to allow the town to return to compliance with the town council bylaw. So first, let's have a quick look at the genesis of the current town council bylaw. So the current law was enacted in 1992 under Article forty-five at town meeting. The bylaw replaced the town council residency bylaw. The bylaw was recommended by a committee called the Legal Services Review Committee, and that committee removed the town council residency requirement from the bylaw, because the town was having trouble finding qual, well, apparently was having trouble finding qualified Concord residents who wanted the job. So, let's see, so you can view the whole town council bylaw on the town's webpage, but the main points of section one are, the town manager will appoint some competent lawyer, not a law firm, but a particular person. The appointment will be annual in May, and the term will begin on the first day of June, so it's a June one to May thirty-first term of appointment. Section two of the town council bylaw is, outlines the responsibilities of the appointed town council, and that is to act as the legal advisor to the town. Now, if you're not familiar with select board meetings, you may not know that town appointments are a very formalized procedure. There's nothing random or ad hoc about appointments. They're spelled out in select board agendas, recorded in select board minutes, and you can see an example of appointments in this select board agenda, which I've snipped out from a recent agenda. You can see there are appointments of the, let's see, the treasurer and collector, the town clerk, town council, and so on. So why an investigation required? Well, for at least a decade prior to 2016, I found no irregularities in the carrying out of the town council bylaw. But from 2016 to 2019, the town council bylaw has largely been disregarded. So what do I mean by disregarded? Well, the person introduced as town council for the last six consecutive town meetings was not the person appointed to be town council, and if you picked up my handout, I gave links to videos where you can, you can open the video and see the town moderator introducing a person as town council, but then I also have a link showing how you can look at the appointment document and see that the person introduced as town council is in fact not the town council that's been appointed. In 2017, the appointed town council was a law firm, not some competent lawyer. The author of the 2018 Annual Town Report Town Council page was not the appointed town council. Various committee minutes name a town council who's not the appointed town council. The 2018 Town Council Appointment Letter refers to the reappointment of a person who is not previously appointed town council. If you picked up the, the handout, you can see the 2017 and 2018 appointments, and you'll notice the reappointment doesn't apply to the person who was appointed the prior year. The town does not have a signed oath of office document on file for 2016, 2017, or 2018. So, so what is this? This oath of office document? It's a piece of paper which has the signatures of the appointed town council and town clerk, and certifies that the town council has taken the oath of office. So I made a public records request to our town clerk and asked for copies of this oath of office document for a number of years, and there was none for 2016, 17, or 18. Page nine. So why should we be concerned about this? Well, it's a violation of a law, that should have us concerned, and legal services spending more than doubled from 2016 to 2019. Town council bylaw ability is, has all but vanished during that same time period. And one has to wonder whether these are related events. So for these reasons, it should be a matter of great public interest to find out what has actually been happening to cause such an extraordinary number of violations of the town council bylaw. So what should we do? Well, our dedication to government transparency here in Concord means that we should take a very active role in finding out why these violations have occurred, and if necessary, to make changes to the town council bylaw which allow the town to return to compliance to the law. Thank you, and I hope you vote for this, this article.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any questions from the select board? Any questions from the audience? All right, seeing none, our next is Article forty-nine, neonicotinoid prohibition on town agricultural land. Ms. Grimwood.
Can I ask what happened to forty-eight?
Who's doing it? Oh, John, sorry, didn't see you. Sorry, Article forty-eight, I skipped, petition historic districts bylaw nominating organizations. Mr. Alhouse.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I bring an article by petition, which is to determine whether the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the general court for an act to amend Chapter three forty-five, which is Concord's historic district bylaw. This would change the organizations that nominate members to the commission. In section four, which is the membership section, the bylaw would replace, this change would replace Concord Antiquarian Society Doing Business as the Concord Museum with Concord Historical Commission, and would replace reference to the trustees of the Free Public Library Corporation with Concord Local Cultural Council. Next slide, please. Briefly, since the hour is late, here are the reasons that I suggest for making this change. It would remove private corporations from the nominating process, something which is a little out of kilter with the way we appoint other commissions in town. This makes our bylaw more compatible with the State Enabling Act, Chapter forty C, which does explicitly include the Historical Commission of towns in the membership nominating process. Further, both the museum and the library own substantial properties within the current historic districts. This change would eliminate any appearance of possible conflict of interest or self-dealing by those organizations. It is true and reasonable that the priorities of these private organizations might not allow, align with town goals in all cases. Further, the Historical Commission and the Local Cultural Council have a town-wide interest in preservation of both the fabric and the culture of Concord. Next slide, please. This and the following slides simply show the resultant language of the bylaw, and naming both the Historical Commission and the Local Cultural Council on this page, and then on the next page, again, naming those two organizations. And finally, the article. Thank you.
First suggestion is just Board of Selectmen needs to be changed to Select Board.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Apparently, we do. Ms. Litwack.
Sherry Litwack, 1575 Monument Street, and trustee of the Concord Free Public Library Corporation. The Massachusetts Legislature by acts of 1960 created the Concord Historic Districts Commission and authorized the trustees of the Concord Free Public Library and the Concord Museum to each nominate a member of the HDC. It was assumed that the Concord Museum and the library trustees, by virtue of their charge and position in the town, would be best able to select persons with the necessary qualifications to understand the mission of the HDC and to serve on such an important board. Another reason for this was to have input on the HDC from town organizations that were independent from the town and separate from the town select board and the town manager as appointing authorities. If there were a perceived conflict, the library, I'm sorry, if there were a perceived conflict of the library, from the library or museum appointee could recuse themselves, as is or should be done with neighbors, friends, relatives, and any other person with a relationship to the applicant. This has been a successful model for sixty years, and I just wonder why this change is being proposed now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Proctor.
Do you want to address that?
No.
Oh, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. John, my question is about the Concord Local Cultural Council. It would be the entire council that would conge, come together, and that they would then appoint somebody to the Historic District Commission, is that your presumption?
They actually do not appoint, they nominate.
They would nominate, the select board would make the appointment.
Yes.
Okay, and there is such a standing council?
Yes, there is.
Okay. I thought there was one in West Concord and one in the, in Concord, Concord, so is there a third one?
I, I have spoken to the chairman of that commission, and he did not indicate that there was a second entity.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Ruth Lauer, 100 Kaiser Road. I think that goes part of the way to my question. I know we have cultural districts, West Concord and Concord Center, but do we not have the Cultural Council which expends lottery money on events and programs throughout the community? And is, which one are you intending to be the sending organization?
Well, it's titled the Concord Local Cultural Council, and, and that is, that is reflected on the town website and on the list of, of boards.
Stay close to the mic, John.
Oh, sorry. Yes, so it's the Concord Local Cultural Council. It, it shows up on the website, it's a, it's an appointed board.
So this would be a very different activity for this board, since, you know, they don't meet every week or necessarily every month, they have the lottery money that they have to award, and it's, and I know they're very intense, they do a good job, they act like a committee acts, but it's a very different action from this sort of request.
As it is for every entity that makes nominations to this group, except the select board. It's certainly not what the library usually does, it's not what the museum usually does. And I think the Cultural Council represents a townwide view
It does.
Of preserving our culture in town, and, and that's part of what the Historic District Commission nomination helps to promote.
And if I can have a follow-up. Is it broken? Is that why you need to make the change? I understand from Concord Antiquarian Society to Concord Museum, because there's been an official name change, but do, does the, the museum not fulfill its responsibility in, in such a way that Concord Historical Commission would fill that gap?
I, I believe this change would be an improvement.
Thank you.
I don't really want to stand here and cast dispersions in any direction.
No.
I believe that this would be an improvement to the nominating process, and would end up with a better Historic Districts Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Kate Chartner, 888 Sudbury Road. I got, should I say I'm a Historic Districts Commissioner, but that's not
You should.
Okay, and I'm a Concord Museum governor, I'm, I'm a museum appointee, but I'm here more because, John, I want to make sure when you present this at town meeting, that people do understand, as Shelley had mentioned, that Concord's Historic Districts Commission is organized under a special act of legislature. That is, it could have been organized under mass general law, like other towns do, and then just follow typical forty C enabling processes, but our town and our state legislature saw fit that Concord was special enough that it actually needed its own organization and its own way of populating it, and as Shelley had said, relied on the respected and reliable sources of the museum and the library to contribute to that, which they do. And usually, if there is any conflict, as I had to do repeatedly last year, the relative appointees do recuse themselves. But I just think it's important when you present this, that people understand the history of the special act. It is worth looking at. Most other towns' historic commissions do not have private party entities on their board, but they're not organized the same way we are either, and that has worked to our advantage at different times. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
And if I can clarify, the Concord Historic Districts bylaw came before the Enabling Act. So there was no Chapter forty C at the time that Chapter three forty-five was passed. So we were, we were leading the way, in effect, and did not have the opportunity to use forty- So we were, we were leading the way in effect, and did not have the opportunity to use forty C.
True, but we've not amended it. I mean, it's, you know, they have overlapped for a few decades now, and I think part of the strength is
The bylaw has been amended. It has been amended.
Our Special Act.
Yes, our Special Act.
Yeah, it has been amended, but I think understanding why this came about, and also the Special Act, you know, like some of the woman just before me said, is something broken, is something not working? It's just worth thinking about.
Thank you. Mr. Fiori.
Dennis Fiori, three oh nine Strawberry Hill Road. I currently serve in the library committee, I've served in the HDC two terms, and I was a former director of the Concord Museum. So I'm well aware of these issues, and I think tonight we're being left with the impression that neither the library or the museum have anything to do with history or historic preservation from what you just said. The library archives are looked to all the time when research is being done on historic structures, and the Concord Museum has looked to for some similar information, particularly from their staff. So they're very involved in any of these decisions, so to take them away from them seems rather odd. Again, I'd like to ask why you're timing this now?
Do you want to respond?
Well, I think, I think I would leave these arguments for town meetings.
I think that's fair enough.
Because this is not a time really to debate the articles as much to understand their structure and intent.
But the question is a good question.
It's a great question.
Why now? But I just don't get into a debate.
That would be fine. Again, I want to, my real interest here was to refute the idea, as this goes forward, that neither the museum nor the library have anything to do with history or historic preservation.
There is no, there's been no such assertion on my part.
Lewis Verzbedia from four ten Lexington Road. I am the vice chair of the Historic Districts Commission, and I'm speaking now strictly in my behalf, and I'm not speaking in favor or against this proposition, but I'm clarifying some points that may help the rest of the audience understand and form an idea of what is being discussed. Currently, there are five institutions in town that nominate members to the Historic Districts Commission, which is the Select Board, the Planning Board, the Natural Resources Commission, the Concord Museum, and the Concord Library. The three, the first three institutions mentioned are townwide institutions or entities that operate for all the citizens of Concord. The last two are strictly private institutions, which most, as a matter of principle, promote their own interests, which may or may not align with the interests of the town. So as a matter of principle, it would be appropriate to remove any private interest from goals that are meant to affect all the citizens of Concord regardless of their particular affiliation. Having said that, I will give you my personal impression, which is that both the Concord Museum and the Concord Library have been very loyal participants in the dealings of the Historic Districts Commission. And I don't see the fact that they would not be any longer members of the nominating committee as any decrease or diminution of the important role that they play in the Historic District Commission and in all the matters of the history of this very important town. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go to Article forty-nine, neonicotinoid provision on town land.
So I'm Sarah Grimwood, and I'm the chair of the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee.
It's coming.
Do I control or just ask for it to be moved on? Do I control? Do I point it over? Pollinators, which include bees, butterflies, wasps, moths, beetles, flies, birds, and bats, provide essential pollination for three-quarters of our major food crops. Pollinators are at risk from a number of factors, including climate change, habitat loss, pesticides, and diseases. In two thousand and eighteen, the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee was formed to examine the issues and concerns surrounding the use of neonicotinoids. These are a class of neuroactive insecticides chemically similar to nicotine. Neonicotinoids, or neonic, were introduced to the United States in the mid nineteen nineties. They quickly became widely used since they're reportedly safe for humans and animals. They act systemically, which means that they become distributed throughout the plant into its stem, leaves, nectar, pollen, vegetables, and fruit. Unless a farmer grows organically, it's almost a hundred percent likely that they will be using neonic-coated seed for many crops like corn and squash. Only about five percent of the neonic is taken up into the plant, and the rest remains in the soil. Since neonic's can have a half-life of up to three years, they can accumulate in the soil and drift into rivers, lakes, and puddles where they can affect aquatic invertebrates. In addition, pollinator-friendly plants grown nearby or in a field which previously contained a neonic-treated crop can also become contaminated. A large body of evidence demonstrates that neonic's present a major risk to be pollinators. They can cause direct mortality at very low doses, and chronic low exposure can affect their ability to forage, pollinate, and reproduce. As a result of these findings, neonic's have been banned in the European Union. The persistent nature and high use of neonic's means that we are continuously exposed to them. In fact, a Harvard research study showed that nearly three-quarters of all pollen and honey tested from hides across Massachusetts contained at least one detectable neonic. We therefore recommend that the town votes to ensure that any new leases or license agreements for agricultural or retail use on town-owned land will prohibit the use of neonic's.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Any questions from the select board? Any questions from the audience? Thank you very much. Seeing none, we'll move on to Article number fifty, authorizing special legislation for additional liquor licenses.
I'm Terry Ackerman, member of the select board, and speaking on behalf of the select board, I have the honor of going last tonight, so I'll be very brief. Article fifty proposes special legislation that will grant a new type of special liquor licenses in Concord. The goal of this article is to reduce administrative paperwork, save time, and encourage economic vitality. Next slide. This is the current status of liquor licenses in Concord. On premises, all alcohol, we have eighteen allowed, seventeen issued. Wine and malt, five allowed, four issued. Off premises, five allowed for all alcohol, and three, five allowed for wine and malt. Next slide. So what's the problem? Well, the problem is we have organizations and businesses in town who have multi-day events, and they wish to serve alcohol at each day of their event. So for each event and for each day, they have to complete application forms, submit the forms, and pay the fee. And then the town staff has to process all of that paper, and then the select board has to vote it. So you can see from tonight's agenda, a large portion of the paperwork is, Umbrella is having an event, and for each different day and each different time, we have to list it, vote it, approve it. In two thousand and nineteen, we had two hundred and twenty of these one-day liquor licenses. So it's a lot of paperwork. If you go to the next slide, we are proposing a home rule petition that would grant this special liquor license for up to six different entities, could use it each year. Each application would have to be completed by the applicant once, once a year, processed by the town, approved by the select board, and then approved by the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. They would still have to pay the same annual fees, and they wouldn't be able to transfer their license. Basically, it simplifies the paperwork, saves time and money for everyone, and encourages economic vitality. So I encourage you to vote for Article fifty. Any questions?
Thank you, Terry. Any questions? Any questions from the audience? So thank you all very much. That ends our public hearing tonight. I remind you again, the public hearing tomorrow night here in this room at seven o'clock to hear the planning board articles. Thanks a lot, and good night.